We'd like to welcome everybody to the November 24th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us tonight as we do the business of the city of New Bern, and that we do those things that will be of safety to our citizens and in the best interest of all. In your name we pray, amen. Would you join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, would you call it, Rowan?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, before we get going, is everybody getting with the agenda? Let's go to the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and a second is their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Mr. Stevens, let's go to item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is a resolution approving the electronic records and imaging policy and procedures. The city follows the North Carolina statutes with respect to the retention of public records. It regularly adopts the latest general records retention and disposition schedule provided by the North Carolina Office of State Archives. The proposed electronic records and imaging policy that's before you tonight establishes the procedures for maintaining electronic records, converting original paper documents to an electronic document, and destroying the original documents after conversion. The policy has been reviewed and approved by the State Archives office. This will allow staff to utilize document management systems to store our records that we have, and this process not only requires less space to physically maintain these documents, but makes locating and retrieving the documents easy as we have to certain documents we have to keep forever. So, just to kind of answer some questions that I'm sure that are going to be asked, so maybe I can stave off a couple of those. This does not apply to our historic records. We do plan on keeping those. We are required to keep physical minutes on-site all the time. This will primarily be applicable to invoices that we might receive from contractors or different vendors. There's a certain retention policy that we would scan those in, and then we can destroy the physical copies rather than having to keep them as well. So, myself or the clerk can answer a lot of those questions. She's the one that keeps those records and is responsible for them, so we're happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Okay, this board, any questions?
So, Mark, this means you have, the city will not be paying official records anymore for keeping the records?
I wouldn't say that we're completely doing away with that. What we're trying to do is minimize the amount of physical records that we have to keep off-site at specific locations. Like, for years, we've used confidential records. Obviously, they sold out, and they're now managed by a different company. Those records get stored at different locations, and sometimes it's very difficult and cumbersome to retrieve those if we need them. That's the reason why we ask sometimes whenever we get public information requests from people or from the media that it's going to take us a little while to dig those up because we have to request them, they have to be sent to us, and then we have to find it in the actual big boxes that we keep them in, so.
Mark, my only other question is, is there a way? I know, of course, the policy was included with our agenda here. I mean, if a citizen wanted to know what records we keep, what we don't, is there a place on our website where we could keep this information and citizens could go? I just, the more we can share, the more it's better for us.
We could probably find someplace to post what we do keep on-site, what we don't keep on-site, what is a digital copy or whatever. I'm sure we can post that. Brenda, you may have some insight a little bit further. I'm sure that's probably more of just a list of what we can keep, what we don't keep, what, how long we keep certain things. It's all based on the state statute requirements as far as retention.
And that's interesting. I think it's just an easy method. I know so many times people contact us about different things, and the more information we can have on our website, where we can point somebody and say, "If you will go to our website under this tab, and there's a list of everything you need. If you need additional help, contact me."
I will work with Colleen and Brenda. We'll try to get something up on the website for that.
Appreciate that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt a resolution approving the electronic records and imaging policy and procedures.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, several calls starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Best, I mean, Bingle.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Let's go to item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is a resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, North Carolina, Alicia Shirley Campbell, and the city of New Bern for 703 Byrne Street. The city conveyed this property at 703 Byrne Street to Habitat for Humanity in March 2016 for the purposes of developing an affordable housing unit for low and moderate income families. Habitat subsequently constructed that home, owned the property, and intends to transfer the home to the buyers, they always do at the end. By executing the deed to transfer ownership to the buyer, the city will release any rights retained under the transfer and reversion agreement that we had previously with Habitat, which is pretty standard for us to have that reversion agreement. In case Habitat doesn't move forward with building it, it reverts back to our ownership. Mr. Attorney has placed this on your agenda, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Scott, are we able to adopt both of these at the same time?
Yes, ma'am. It's announced.
Okay. Would, I'd like to consider that, since they're on the same street, both the same process. And so, if no one has any questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a general warranty deed between the city, excuse me, between Habitat of Humanity of Craven County, Alicia Shirley Campbell, and Michael Anthony Chance Drew, and the city of New Bern for both 703 Byrne Street and 12, excuse me, 1022 North Byrne Street.
Second.
It's a mouthful.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, several calls starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is a resolution approving a deed of easement, and temporary construction easement with the Housing Authority of the city of New Bern, North Carolina. The city is working on a 12-inch force main for Phase III of the Township 7 Sewer Improvement Project. This will be needed, this will be routed through the southern portion of the Trent Court property. This is going to necessitate a permanent utility easement as well as temporary construction easement while they're doing the installation. New Bern Housing Authority has approved and executed the easements, which now need to be approved and executed by the city. So, it's before you tonight for consideration. There's a memo included in the packet from Mr. Hughes, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Mark, where is this particular location at on the Housing Authority's property?
I believe, Jordan, if I'm not wrong, this is the portion that ties next to the pump station adjacent to the administration office.
Yes, sir.
And essentially, will go across the street over to the property that's owned by the Tron Palace, where we'll have the new relocated pump station.
The property owned by Tron Palace?
Yes. That parking lot area. Is that that parking lot, open space area where the old dugout canoe used to be, or the wooden canoe? I think that's kind of where it's going.
Okay, thank you.
In the vicinity of that area.
And what's the board's pleasure on this item?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt a resolution approving the deed of easement and temporary construction easement with the Housing Authority of the city of New Bern.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, several calls starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Craven County Board of Commissioners for the 2020 Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. The New Bern Police Department applied for and received $10,754 in grant funds from the 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, which requires no match. The grant was a joint application with Craven County, and the commissioners have approved this memorandum of understanding regarding the use of the funds. Grant funds will be utilized to purchase a police K-9 rifle and optics to assist with investigating illegal drug activities. There's a memo that's been included in your packet, and if you recall, this was on our agenda last, the last meeting to approve the budget amendment. So, this was actually just to clean up and make the memorandum of understanding complete at this point with the county.
So, with this, we have five dogs now, five K-9s?
I think this is, still leaves us at four, Mr. Daniels.
That's great. We have one that is aging out, so we'll be replacing, replacing one.
There's no questions? No more questions? I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Craven County Board of Commissioners for the 2020 Byrne Justice Assistance Grant.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, several calls starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle, yes. Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12 is not as daunting as it looks. It kind of reminds me of the back-to-school that Rodney Dangerfield movie was in, where the guy came up and said that this question was 10 different parts. But anyways, this is a master, this is a resolution approving a master services agreement with Pike Engineering LLC for the engineering services related to NC DOT projects and authorizing the execution of all of the different subsections of engineering services for the specific projects. Those projects are the US 70 James City work that's to be done, the 70 bypass from Thurman Road to the Havlock bypass, the Havlock bypass, the NC 43 connector, the MLK roundabout, US 70 James City, and the Havlock bypass. All of these projects have kind of already started with some of the engineering work, but ultimately, we need to finalize and improve all these engineering services and relocation agreements with Pike to perform these works. So, happy to answer any questions. Charlie's here as well, if you have any questions regarding these. But we need to get these finalized. We did go out to bid on these engineering design and project coordination, and Pike Engineering was the most respondent, responde to the bid. It's requested that this master service agreement be approved and the request for services be executed to initiate the work for each of the different projects.
Okay, Alderman Odom.
Yes, Mr. Stevens. These projects, some of them have been put on hold and pushed back. What does that mean to this agreement? Are we actually putting money out for these projects that some of them have been put out for years?
We've actually recovered the money that we have put out, but we don't know when the project's going to be taken off hold. So, what these agreements do is establish a contract with Pike Engineering that we can move forward as soon as the state says they want to begin moving forward. So, we're not back and forth every single time. But they'll be tabled until the state has appropriate funding.
Okay, thank you.
Charles, while you're up there, a couple of things. Out of all of those, two of them are not necessarily totally 100% reimbursable. I think you're going to reach out to the county on one of them, and you're going to reach out to the county in Havlock on another one. And so, who's to say we're going to get reimbursed? It's about $58,000 on one, and it's about $90,000 total. So, are our chances good that we're going to get reimbursed by those folks? Or should we be planning on paying $90,000 bucks?
I believe we'll be reimbursed by the county for their 50% of the share, and then the rest of it, I believe, we'll have to absorb through our operating expenses.
Because you, it says in here you're going to Havlock first and reimbursed. Are we going to get reimbursement from Havlock?
From the city of Havlock?
Uh-huh.
I haven't had those discussions, but I think the county has ownership in that location, so I'm just uncertain if that project is going to extend into the city of Havlock limits, and they'll be exposed to it or not. If it is, we certainly will sit at the table and...
It says here, "Relocated shared ownership fiber utilities is not reimbursable by DOT, and the city will seek reimbursement from the county and/or city of Havlock."
Mayor, let me weigh in here, if you don't mind. We recently had a meeting with the county. I had the same kind of concerns that you had. This is a, it's an agreement, and this is a meeting that Charlie, myself, Scott, attended with the county manager, their IT director, as well as the county attorney, Eric Grady. To have a discussion regarding this agreement that we have, it's kind of an, I guess, an unsaid joint shared ownership of this fiber system that exists between the different municipalities as well as the county. We all kind of share and contribute into this thing. There's portions of this that's in the county that we don't contribute any to. There's portions of this system that is county and Havlock on. There's portions of it that are city-owned. And it really, it's been kind of difficult to ascertain the real way all this stuff should operate. So, in the interest of moving these projects forward specifically, because the two you're relating to are the fiber-related projects, the fact that they're tied to the Havlock and the James City work that needs to be done, we're going in with the same relationship that we've been working for the past, I don't know however long this, how long is this agreement?
15 years.
15 or so years. But with the understanding that we probably need to clean this up and make this something more formalized between all of the different governmental entities, because there's just a lot of gray, is the way I look at it. And I think the city attorney, he and Eric are going to try to work together, and we're going to reconvene. But in the interest of moving these projects forward, I think the county is and has budgeted in their capital plan their 50% share of the cost for these two projects in their budget. And so, we are doing the majority of the work and the contracting necessary, and the engineering fees will be split as well. So, that's where a lot of this share is going to come in. And, but the county has kind of given us their word that they've got these funds set aside, and they're ready to move forward with the project.
Have you got that memorandum of understanding in writing with them?
Mayor, and that's the issue. I'd love to tell you that we do, and that's where we've, again, we're working with this said handshake agreement, if you want to call it that. Scott's aware of it, Eric Grady's aware of it, myself, Jack's aware of it. And I brought up to the attention that we need to get this clarified. We just met about a week and a half ago, a week, last week. And we really need to, but I think to unravel all of this is going to take a little bit more than time than for us to hold up this entire project to get this done.
Well, look, I'd hold the project up if it was going to line up at the end of three, four years that the city got a $5, $6 million bill that we didn't know we were going to get, because I think in three different places on here, it enumerates all these hourly charges. So, I assume that means that there might be some overruns. And so, in case that something comes up and it's blamed on the city or something, and there's an extra $100,000, how's that going to be negotiated? In other words, because these are all, there's prices on them, but that doesn't mean they can't increase. But, so, is that going to be on an individual basis?
I think in any case like that, Mayor, I think we will drop back, formulate the, circle the wagons, and come to our boards and update and let y'all know about what any kind of cost overruns might be associated with that. But I have the same concerns as you, Mayor. And if this board wishes us to not enter into this agreement and move forward, then I will inform the county manager, and we just won't do it. But I really don't know what else to do other than bring it to y'all's ear attention that this is what we're dealing with.
Okay, and on the selection of Pike, I assume, and again, I don't have it right in front of me, did we earlier approve that, did the board approve Pike from the selection?
We're approving Pike tonight.
Yeah.
Well, we solicited, we went out for requests for qualifications.
Procedurally, though, like, I'll give you an example. Like, when we did the swimming pool, I remember there were three or four architects that we, we didn't particularly get into details with, but we did select one. And then it was up to the staff to go back and negotiate the deal. So, Mr. Davis, is that, is this, we're approving this tonight, and then you got, the staff's going to go back and work this out with Pike Engineering? Or is it a done deal?
Pike won the beauty contest.
Okay, well, did we, did the board get involved in the beauty contest? Or was that staff?
I think that's what you're approving tonight, Mayor.
Well, I mean, what, I'm buying a Chevrolet Impala, and I might want to buy a Ford Galaxy. I mean, I mean, how do I know what to compare Pike Engineering to? Didn't Pike the one that did the $20,000 thing over there on the substation? We negotiated that deal with?
Yes, sir, that.
So, you know, I'm a little concerned about the validity of the selection process and whether or not there's going to be any overruns on all this money that the city of New Bern is going to be liable for.
We publicly requested qualifications and solicited from the market an opportunity to go after this work. And after soliciting that from the public, we had one response, and that was Pike.
Okay, so, that's a new one for me, that you only had one response, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, the only thing about that, and we've had this on a bid a couple of months ago, I find hard to believe that there's not an engineering firm other than Pike that would want to bid on this, or, I mean, not in any way.
The work is specific to electric utilities work, and there's also a large volume of work that goes along with this project and a demanding schedule. So, I'm not in that market space. I don't run a private business providing power engineering services. But they're not all around. The market competition is just, it's not abundant. We need more power engineers.
Okay, so, what are any questions about all this?
I'm getting a concern, because it's something that you're saying that we're going to go into an agreement with not an agreement, that something can actually cost a little bit more money without us knowing about it. And we don't have an agreement from the other side, but we're trusting that they have some money set aside, that they would come in and take care of the problem. Is that what I'm hearing they're saying?
Yes, sir. There's two issues. I think we're combing two different issues. There's fiber contracts that have to be relocated in James City. The counties have agreed to share that cost.
She said you need to get to the microphone, sorry.
There's two issues. The mayor raised the issue of the fiber relocation, city and the county jointly own fiber network that passes through James City. It's got to be relocated out of that corridor and out of the way. The county's agreed to share that cost with us 50/50. Staff has worked on those numbers. They've got good type numbers. Feel very confident about that. County has the money already budgeted from the last several years. It's in their budget. They're ready to cut the check as soon as the work is done. That's one issue. The second issue the mayor's raising is whether or not any of these contracts can go over budget, and every contract can go over budget. That's the nature of this kind of work.
So, in a different hypothetical, if this had been some other type of engineering that engineers like to do, or there's an abundance of engineers with that specialty, tonight, would you have been presenting us three or four different alternative engineering firms?
Yes, sir.
And then we would have been picking that, other than the fact that there was nobody wanting to bid on it but the one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Typically, if I would have multiple bids, I'd be presenting you what I call a bid tab. And it would show all the results and what their qualifications were, what their prices were, and then probably most likely a recommendation, and then it would be your decision on who selects.
So, I mean, as understanding as I can be of this whole questioning period I've had is the fact that with COVID and the amount of work out there, I'm sure all the engineers are very busy right now, but I still find it a little bit incredulous that there's only one firm that would bid on this. Yes, ma'am?
Scott, in the past, any projects that we've had in conjunction with Craven County, and like you say, we're not on an agreement with them, a signed agreement, have there been any problems with them coming forth with their half of the, with their 50% of the monies that you know of?
Nothing specific comes to mind, other than we've got 15 years of history with this particular fiber optic network. And literally, it's been taken care of by staff, and it's, knock on wood, has gone seamless for 15 years, ironically, without a shred of contracts or documents in place, which is going to take us a year or two to put that agreement together, because it's quite complex, which is why we're at a stage here where we're going to handshake, split the cost of 250, because we know that line is jointly used by the county and the city. There are other legs that get complicated, the community college and Havlock. That's not part of what we're relocating right now.
Thank you.
May I ask Charlie a question? Charlie, may I ask a question, please? How many RFQs did you actually send out?
One.
Just one?
Yes, sir.
And it went to only one, it went to Pike only?
Pike's the only one that formally responded.
Okay, but how many did you, how many different engineering firms did you send it out to?
We posted it on our website. We went through our purchasing department. They published it to the public.
So, it was well-publicized?
Everybody that's in the market has an opportunity to see it.
Okay, and only one responded? And that's according to, that's in accordance with policy, correct?
Correct. It's not unheard of. It's disappointing in the market. It tells me that we need more power engineers.
Yeah. Somebody going to make a motion? Do we have to do, do we have to read all this in the motion, or just A through G?
A through G, spot.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion then that we consider adopting a resolution approving a master service agreement with Pike Engineering LLC for engineering services. Oh, my computer just went out. Sorry about that. For engineering services for NC DOT-related projects and authorizing the execution of the following requests, A through G. Is that good enough, Mr. City Attorney?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, second is their discussion. I do want to say, some of what I'm doing tonight is asking the questions that a year or two down the road, we will have answers for if we need questions answered that two or three years from now, somebody might ask. They got answered tonight. So, that was some of what I was doing. So, is there any other, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
The motion carries. Let's go to appointments, Alderman Bingle.
Yes, Mayor. Tonight, I would like to make an appointment and a reappointment. I'd like to appoint Bo Warner-Svach to fill the position that Diane Bucha resigned on the New Bern Craven County Library Board. First.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same.
I'd also now like to reappoint Shelley Malloy to the New Bern Craven County Library Board. She was fulfilling an expired term, and now the full term is starting, and she would like to be reappointed. So, that's my motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second is their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All in favor, same.
Thank you.
Okay.
Brenda, you'll send that to Cassandra, right? Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Harris.
None tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Astor.
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Kinsey.
None, sir.
Alderman Best.
None.
Alderman Odom.
None, sir.
Okay, attorneys report. City managers report.
Mayor, I have several. Wanted to kind of update the public on this first one and the board. At the request of Alderman Astor, he had asked that I look into, and the mayor, to look into the possibility of trying to utilize some CARES funds look into the possibility of trying to utilize some CARES funds and possibly get some COVID testing events throughout the city. And in doing so, kind of got Mary started on digging down and chasing some rabbit holes to see what she could find out. And fortunately enough, we were able to grab the ears of a couple bunny rabbits and pull them up, and we were able to find some people who are willing to do some COVID testing here in the city of New Bern. So, tonight, we have released a public statement, as well as a public release for the citizens and the media to advertise that the city of New Bern will be hosting and partnering with Green County Healthcare Incorporated to host three different upcoming COVID-19 testing events that will be at no cost to the public. The dates and times and locations are as follows. Monday, December the seventh, from eleven AM to three PM, will be at Lawson Creek Park, which is at thirteen oh nine Country Club Road. Monday, December the fourteenth, twenty twenty, we will, from eleven to three, will be at West New Bern Recreation Center on twelve twenty-five Pine Tree Drive. Wednesday, December the sixteenth, twenty twenty, eleven AM to three PM, we will be at Henderson Park at nine oh one Chapman Street, where Stanley White Recreation Center formerly sits at currently. This has come about based upon some state and federal funding that was issued to North Carolina, through North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and they partnered with the North Carolina Community Health Center Association to provide some testing in communities where it's most needed. As y'all may have seen, Craven County was listed as an orange county, they were red, orange, and yellow. Orange is that significant part, I guess, for COVID cases, and red indicates that it's critical. So, we're in that medium range right now. So, we wanted to try to do some things and reach out to try to find some opportunities for our citizens to have some testing. No insurance is required, no funds are required, you basically will drive in, stay in your car, the test will be applied, and the results will return back in three to four days. So, you don't even have to get out, there will be an opportunity where for those who do not have a vehicle, they can actually, you know, bike up or walk up for them to be tested as well. But, for the most purposes, it will be drive-in only. Additionally, if the test comes back positive, they will be contacted by the Craven County Health Department, they will reach out to them, there's information on there about the number they will be reaching out from, so if you see that number, probably be in your best interest to answer it. If it's not from, if it's not a positive test, they will, you'll receive a phone call from the Green County Healthcare Incorporated to let you know that it was a negative result. So, it's our hopes that we have as many people and as many tests administered as we can at these different locations, these three different times, and again, no cost to our citizens, so we hope people take advantage of it. All of this information has been posted on our social media pages, it's been posted on our website, so if anybody wants to get information, they're welcome to get it there. Additionally, the board, y'all will be forwarded, if it hasn't already happened, you will be forwarded that information so that you send it out to your constituents as well. So, that was going out this evening, I think Colleen's already posted to our website and our social media pages, so it should already be there for the public, so that whenever we made this announcement, they would be able to find it immediately. So, that's the first thing, happy to answer any questions you may have regarding that.
I do, Mark.
Sure.
So, is this, I know it's three different locations, times, is this just going to be a one-time thing, testing?
This, right?
Or is this going to occur maybe?
Well, these are the three dates that she, this company, the lady that we corresponded with, they had available through the remaining part of the year, so we have three dates, there's a four-hour window there that people can drive in, it's during the lunch hour, it's on Mondays and Wednesdays, or two Mondays and one Wednesday, they can drive in, it's during the lunch hour, they can pull through, they can get their test, they can head on. So, these are the three dates we have now. However, she did indicate that there is a possibility that we could find more dates after the new year, I know Mary has been working with them. Mary has also been chasing down some of the other rabbit holes, the possibility of getting some other participants to also jump in on this, so that we may offer more free testing.
I think this is a great start, you know, we've got to start somewhere, so if we can get this up and going, and see what the response is, and then potentially move on from there, I think this is great, good work, thanks, Mary.
Great job, ma'am.
Didn't they say that they had about ninety million dollars available for?
It was a significant number, I can't remember exactly what the number is, Mary, but it was a lot.
I thank the board for their concerns, Alderman Astor particularly, you jumped right on all this the other day, that's great. Go ahead, you had some other? Yes, ma'am?
Also, I just wanted to put it out there, also, for those people that don't have a vehicle or can't come to these three locations, you know, the Craven County Health Department also administer tests free as well, so you can go, call the Health Department and make an appointment, go to the Health Department as well.
I mean, we need to put out all the information we can, in many places, as we can.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Item number two, that I want to update you real quick, just a real quick update on the Stanley White Rec Center. We have been going through the environmental assessment process, it's been going well, we've been gathering the comments and information from our public at large about the Stanley White Rec Center, the potential move to the alternative site. I wanted to kind of give you kind of an update as to where we are, the asbestos abatement has been completed at Stanley White Recreation Center, our contractors also provided the proper paperwork for the asbestos removal and disposal, which is necessary for us to have for the FEMA reimbursement process. Public Utilities is in the process of removing all of the utilities, the power and the water and sewer connections, this should be completed before Thanksgiving happens, so probably tomorrow, the last day, we'll have everything completed. Matt has indicated, the Director of Public Works has indicated that the demolition and disposal is scheduled for after the new year, so around the first of January, we should start on that, and it'll probably take about thirty to sixty days to get the building completely done and removed from the site. At this time, it's the plan of Foster to utilize the existing concrete slab as much as we can, not knowing what we're getting into until you start tearing things down, there may be rebar into the concrete and all this other stuff, but they're going to try to maximize the savings of whatever concrete flies at their particular site for the potential use of outside basketball courts, or whatever we may have available at that time. So, it is our intent to hopefully salvage some of the slab for use for recreational purposes, if this environmental assessment process approves the moving forward with relocation of the Stanley White Rec Center at the new location. So, just wanted to kind of give you all an update, regardless if they don't approve it, the building still has to come down, because we're going to have to elevate it, we're going to have to do all that, all that's been approved, so we might as well get a jumpstart on removing the building and taking care of the asbestos-related issues and utilities. So, just wanted to kind of give everyone an update as to where we are with the Stanley White Rec Center.
Okay, what else you got?
The final item, let's see, I have BevCor. As you know, the board approved us utilizing BevCor for the administration of the five oh one C three COVID nineteen impact funding, thousand dollars per nonprofit. I'm happy to say that twenty-six applicants applied for and have been approved to receive the funds, we're in the process at this time of processing all of those and getting those funds dispersed, that's been forwarded over to Mary. I also sent all of you an email that contains all of the recipients of the thousand dollars, so out of the fifty thousand dollars that the board put aside for it, twenty-six thousand dollars of that will be allocated in one thousand dollar increments to those different nonprofits. So, the list has been provided in the Excel spreadsheet through an email I sent this afternoon. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Spring, what time today, what is something about a total of fifty-two thousand?
Well, no, we talked about.
I have a question on that.
Yeah, and Alderman Harris, you may want to follow along with this, but, you know, originally, we spoke about if there was additional funds, second round, so potentially, what we could do, since there's twenty-six applicants, we could ask to fund an additional two thousand dollars to that fifty thousand dollars, and give each of the twenty-six just an additional one thousand dollars, and leave it at that, because the cutoff is already taking place, we have all the applicants, we could potentially do that, so that would be a suggestion that I would put out there for discussion for the board.
Do you want to make a motion on that?
Not at this point, Alderman Harris, do you have comments on that?
Yeah, that was the comment I was going to have, because I know that we took a thousand dollars away from the money to pay the fee, so it would be three thousand dollars added, so we can give each two, correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure of the fees, what was the additional charge, Mark, do you know on the fees?
You remember, Mary, I can't remember, it was, I want to say, I thought it was three percent is what the number was, if I recall correctly, and, but please don't quote me on that, because I don't have it in front of me, but I thought it was three percent, so three percent of fifty thousand would be fifteen hundred dollars, if I'm doing my math correct, so fifteen hundred dollars would be the process, they vetted all the ones, so the vetting is easy just to apply that, that they get an extra thousand dollars, assuming that they're all good on that, and the board approves it, so, and that would bring your total up to fifty-two thousand dollars, which is right at the budget number that y'all had kind of set aside.
We only had one meeting in December, so I didn't have to do anything tonight, have to prepare for it.
Yeah, we need to prepare it now, because the monies and the funds have to be dispersed and spent before the end of the year, so, you know, I'm happy at this point to make a motion that we appropriate additional funds to go ahead and give the twenty-six applicants that have been approved, an additional one thousand dollars.
Second.
Second.
Motion, second, did you want to add the fifteen hundred dollars to that for the service fee?
I think we need, you want to just come back to us, I don't believe that that would stop us from doing anything, would it?
What, now that we know how many applicants we have, and we have the, that we know that the board wants to move forward with two thousand dollars, just when we come back in December, why don't we come back with a full-blown approval? I don't know that necessarily, does it require budget amendment, because it's all in the, Mary, I'm looking at you. Does it require a budget amendment for us to do this, if they want to spend this, or do, is it all included in this?
We only have fifty thousand in that line.
Okay, so in that lineup, we only have fifty thousand, so what we'll do is, we will come back with fifty-two plus whatever the costs were for the administrative costs, and we'll do that full-blown budget amendment at the end.
I would think we can negotiate that fee down to the fact that it's already, they've already vetted and done that, so not to pay an additional fee for the additional.
I don't think there's going to be an additional fee.
Okay.
We're doing all the work as far as distribution, all they did was vet the applicants, that's done.
Okay.
Yes.
So, then we would just have to be additional for the fees.
Okay.
Okay.
Mark, what about this one, this highlighted in yellow, it says this?
That's the, that nonprofit, they slightly missed the deadline, so I said to go ahead and include them, but that, they were just like a day late on it, so I told them to go ahead and utilize, they're well-known in the area, they missed it by like a day, so I told them to go ahead and include in the group.
Okay, is everybody in a motion?
Was anybody else late in the board's opportunity? Well, I realized.
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure if anybody else was late, I know they sent out a bunch of applications, those are the ones that they've received, and obviously, at some point or another, we have to cut it off, we have, you know, we've got, because we've got to have this dispersed by the thirty-first of December, so we had to have a cutoff date, so that one was like one day late. If you want a hard deadline, I'm happy to utilize the hard deadline, and we can let that last one know that they missed a deadline.
Mark, no, if you could, would you be able to tell me total, how many people applied, or was it just the twenty-six?
I'm pretty sure that I can get you that number, I don't have it off the top of my head, I know, if I recall correctly, from an email that I've got from the folks at BevCor, I know they sent out about fifty-one applications to folks, and I'm pretty sure that almost every application that was received was approved. I don't think, honestly, that there was any that were turned away if they were from Craven County and they were approved, so I think what you have in front of you is pretty much all the applications that were received.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
I'm done, sir.
Okay, well, I was going to do this in new business, but I think under your City Manager's Report, you know, New Bern is the enchanting waters of the Noose and the Trent, and we now have four boats out by Lawson Creek, one on the other side of the bridge toward Old Town, and we have one over here, and I've talked with the manager and the attorney, you know, and the board, you know, if they, if the board sees fit to take as zealous an action as you would want to do to proceed with Beaufort Plan or others, Jacksonville is working on this, but quickly, New Bern is becoming a repository for a bunch of fiberglass is what it boils down to, nobody knows how to get rid of it, boats, and I think that the one boat, the metal boat drifted up to Union Point to the docks and was potentially going to do some damage, and the fire department moved it off, and so, you know, this seems to be on the New Bern side of the river, so if you could, if you gentlemen would expand on this as to some options that the Alderman have?
May I ask the board, this would go on Alderman Bingle's list for local bills, Beaufort has one, I mentioned to you today, oddly, the counties, the coastal counties have a special statute as part of their abandoned vehicle statute. Cities have the same abandoned vehicle statute, but the county has abandoned vessels and cities don't, so, you know, if New Bern were to have that tool, it'd be great, but that's effectively what Beaufort has.
Let me ask you this, if the city were to try to reach out to the county, what legal statute do they have, we don't have, that they can maybe partner with us to, this is not good for any of us, the county included? I mean, is there a mechanism within their, the statute that gives them some power that we don't have?
Yes, sir.
What is that, do you know, I mean?
They have all the tools, that, just like an abandoned vehicle left on the street, they have the same statute for abandoned boats. It's the exact same statute. You tag it, you find the owner, you go through a process, you have an appeal process, there's a penalty, it's a crime if you don't comply, and they can enforce it just like an abandoned vehicle, and that's the tool that the city would need to do this.
So, procedurally, the boats are in the zoning area, middle way of the river, but they're not necessarily in, being public trust waters, the city does not have police powers over those waters.
If they were?
But county seemingly has something we don't have.
That's right, our jurisdiction goes to the center line of the Trent and the center line of the Noose, so any vessels in that zoning jurisdiction could be subject to an ordinance if we had the enabling statute. The county has the enabling statute, cities don't. That's what we would need to a local bill. Part of your question was, well, why wouldn't the county start doing this? And they could, it's just that the county's going to take on a very large responsibility with all of the shorelines to implement this, and I would expect part of their concerns would be the cost of removal, so it could be that the county could adopt an ordinance under the statute that enables that ordinance, provided that local governments would fund the operation, so that's a possibility. It seems to be easier to me to get the local bill and just do it ourselves, because we're going to foot the bill for the county anyway, if they were so inclined to even do it.
Well, aren't some of these vessels outside of our limits?
I would expect they are, I would expect.
So, they're the county's responsibility?
Well, if the county, well, there's twenty coastal counties that have this, and I don't know that any of them are using it, that they have that tool available, if they want to adopt an ordinance to do it.
So, what is Beaufort doing right now, do you know what they're doing?
Much like, it's much like the abandoned vehicles, they, you know, when they see derelict or abandoned boats, you know, they go out to it, they try to find the owner, they send the notices, they go through a process, just like it was a car left on the street.
So, that's the bill you're saying, Sabrina, should work on?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Good list.
Yeah, that's a good one, that would be a great tool.
No, it would be good for us, because it impacts our downtown, and it impacts all the waterways, and I get calls, I think we all get calls on abandoned boats.
And I've been seeing grants recently, too, where city local governments that have these tools are getting grants to remove the boats.
Do you know if anyone's tried contacting the owners to see what their intent is?
For the New Bern ones, not yet, I know staff is going to go track, send a boat out there and see what we can figure out.
A lot of times, they're getting so sophisticated, because I've talked to some of the marinas and people, is that, you know, they know they're going to abandon the boat, they remove all, you know, identification, whatever, and they just let the boat sit there in the middle of the night, and then they leave it, so it's difficult to be able to trace whose boat it is, and where it came from, who the owner is.
Alderman Odom?
Scott, if the city were to try to find the owner, and we can't do so?
Right.
And the city were to take care of the boat, pull it away, who's going to come and get us?
In other words, if we didn't have?
If we didn't have that local bill?
Right. Whoever claims to be the owner.
And then if they come to us, then is there any sort of fees that we could put on them?
No, because we don't have any statutes to let us do that, we're basically taking personal property and destroying it, so our, the claim against the city would be the value of that vessel, whatever it was.
And didn't I hear somewhere recently that there's some grants?
There are, yes, sir, there are, there are, if you can find the owner, I mean, there's two issues with the owner, if you haven't. owner, I mean, there's two issues with the owner, if you have an enabling statute, the owner lets you go through a process to potentially find them, but most of these folks are judgment-proof, which means it's like the, it's like the dilapidated dwellings, it, you know, at the end of the day, the cost is going to come back to the city, so just like a dilapidated dwelling, if you can find the owner and realize that they're judgment-proof, then the, then the question is, can you give us a bill of sale, so we can go get this vessel destroyed at our expense?
So, so if we were to apply for the grant, receive the funding, we could theoretically go to the county and say, we're willing to foot the bill, will you allow us to go get this vessel out?
Well, that, see, the problem is, they have to adopt an ordinance to, 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 to do all that, and that's, that's a bit of an undertaking.
Well, what, um, you know, in our discussion, my concern is that New Bern getting known as being the repository for fiberglass boats that can't figure it, and, and just, hey, I know, go, go take your boat, put it in the water down at Lawson Creek, and lift it drift over there, you know?
Sure, but that's the double-edged sword, and that's why if we had a statute, at least you've got some heavy fines and some criminal penalties that would present some kind of deterrent if you could find out who did it, otherwise...
Is there any case law on abandoned boats and being out there, and somebody, um, run into it, and somebody get hurt from these things being out in the middle of the river?
I'm, I'm sure there are, yeah, I'm sure there are.
So, can we just make this simple and ask the General Assembly to expand their current law and include municipalities?
Yes, sir, that, that's my point, just cut and paste the county statute into the city, and then we have an enabling statute, and we can adopt our own ordinance.
Okay, anything else on that one? Let's go to new business, starting with Alvin Bingle.
Well, a couple of things, um, I'd like to, uh, where's Foster, Foster, come on up and talk to us, um, we're getting ready to hit the holidays here, so I thought maybe he could just update us on what we're doing for Santa's arrival, Merry Merry Christmas, um, it's, it's been reimagined to be safe and magical, um, this year, and then if you'd also to talk to us about New Year's Eve, because I've had several questions from our downtown merchants and others wanting to know what we were going to do for New Year's Eve, so address that.
Okay, well, Public Works has been decorating downtown streets, Parks and Recreation has been working on Union Point Park, uh, the Berry Merry kickoff will be this Friday with the, the tree lighting down at Union Point Park, um, now this will be a social distance event, so we also have options for you to watch, uh, the tree lighting virtually, uh, the City of New Bern Facebook page, as well as Parks and Recreation, and the Berry Merry Facebook page will all be broadcasting this live, and I believe Colleen is also going to, uh, be able to show this on the access channel after, after the fact. So Santa is also greeting visitors at, uh, Bear Plaza, uh, throughout the holiday season. This year, it's a reservation-only process where you can go to the BerryMerryChristmas.com, you can register for, for a time, it's free to register, if you want to get a photo taken with Santa, there is a, a nominal fee for that, but, uh, registration's been going very well so far for folks to see Santa, and, and again, Santa will be there throughout the season. Um, Berry Merry will also be doing a storytime with Mrs. Claus on several dates in Bear Plaza, and so you need to register for that as well, because it's a social distance event. Uh, a new thing this year will be the mistletoe market that'll be taking place on the Talbot Lot, and this will be on the weekends throughout the holiday season, so we'll have some tents put up there where some artisans will be out there selling, uh, Christmas themed items, uh, there will be some entertainment, uh, some food vendors and things like that on Fridays and Saturdays as well, so that's going to be a, a nice, uh, attraction, and then I was told today by Amanda with Berry Merry Christmas that, that they are going to be scheduling some carriage rides on a few dates, uh, the first date will be on Saturday November twenty-eighth, and they're going to do one on Saturday, December nineteenth, from four to seven P.M. Also, our annual, it's actually the Thirty-Six Annual Coastal Christmas Flotilla will be on Saturday, December fifth, before the flotilla occurs, we will, uh, be having the Aeroshell aerobatic team doing, uh, uh, an airshow for us, and this is sponsored by Bendy and Buddy Stallings, it starts about three-thirty P.M., the show will be about thirty-five to forty minutes, you can watch this from Union Point Park, uh, Council Bluff Green, and also on the Riverwalk, uh, in front of the Sudan Shriners Lot. We will also be showing this on, uh, our Facebook pages as well, so it should be a really nice addition to the holiday season. Let's see what else we have for you, on December twelfth, we are going to be doing a, a holiday movie at Union Point Park, we're going to have some cider and things like that, and we'll have social distance circles, uh, in place, so, so everyone can spread out throughout the park. Now, for the New Year's Eve event, we're not going to do a block party this year, we've just got too many fears of bringing a lot of people downtown in that small area, so what we are going to do is, we're going to do the bear drop, um, that's the only thing we're going to be doing, uh, we're working with Swiss Bear to, to close the streets, so to allow the restaurants to have the downtown dining again on Thursday evenings, and we'll just drop the bear, so we'll also broadcast this on our Facebook pages as well, so folks can see that, and hopefully, twenty-twenty-one will be a much better year, and we can do a lot of celebrating.
Union Point's looking nice.
Well, thank you, it's going to be lit up, uh, on, uh, Friday night, we, we added a, a big season's greetings, we're going to keep that up, uh, tonight, tomorrow night, and Thanksgiving, so check that out as you leave tonight.
Great job, thank you so much.
Good job, Foster.
Yeah, really good job, so get out, and you can, if you feel like you can't get out, you can enjoy it at home, if not, you know, come on out and enjoy all the hard work from staff. Um, and then the other thing I, I do want to ask Mark about and, and talk to the board about, um, I guess with the governor's new orders and the concern with, um, the increase, uh, maybe we need to go back to our Zoom meeting for a while, so I wanted to kind of talk about potentially, you know, for the next month or two, um, maybe moving to a Zoom meeting, because I'm, I'm hearing concerns from people, they don't, they're concerned about our, um, Plexiglas and whatever we, we have here, so I, I want to put that out for discussion, I don't know how the board feels about that, but, um, maybe we need to go take a step back for a little bit, so just wanted to put that out there and see.
From a, from a staff standpoint, it's literally sending out a, a, a meeting invite, uh, and working with I.T. and Colleen to make sure that we publicly post it, and, and Brenda, uh, the way it's necessary, there's a little bit of a different statute as far as the notice requirements on those types of meetings, but it's not a big issue, uh, we've done it before, and we can do it again, so from our end, it's, it's very simple, but it's up to the board whether they wish to do so.
I, I was going to ask Scott, he just stepped out, but wasn't there something or some concern about public hearings, doing those virtually, how, how, do we have any scheduled, and how would we handle that?
Um, I don't know, Brenda, are you aware of any that's on the docket for public hearings?
Um, the December the eighth meeting is going to call for one to be held in January, but they could possibly delay that, that's from Development Services.
But it's, but it's not a public hearing, it's just a call for...
It's just called for, yes.
It's called for one, but if the, if the Zoom meetings continue in January, it would affect that public hearing, the first meeting in January.
Is our meeting the fourteenth or the eighth, it's the eighth?
The eighth, December the eighth.
The first is on a Tuesday, right, so, okay.
For the meeting on the eighth, we kind of close out, and don't we nominate who the next mayor person is, and they have to get sworn in?
I, I think that would be, would that be an issue?
Well, that person could just come back, whoever's appointed could just come down the next day privately with Brenda, right, Brenda?
Yes, you can also take the oath virtually.
Okay.
If, if you have a Bible or something to swear on, and then just come in later to sign the oath.
There you go.
Sweet, that sounds good to, whatever everybody else wants to do, we need to slow the spread, so.
What did she say? I don't know what she said.
She said whatever we needed to do to, to slow the spread, she thought would be a good...
Well, do you need a motion for that, or do, is, do we have to have a motion, or?
I have a question, so, so why would we want to, why would we want to go virtual? We've been attending these meetings, we're on the side of Plexiglas, and I know it's our right if we want to wear a mask, but if our governor has made a mandate to wear a mask, why can't we continue to ha, hold our meetings here at City Hall for our public?
I'm afraid people are, a lot, I'm hearing concerns, I, I didn't, I just put this out there for discussion, not...
Right, right, and this...
But if that's, you know, if people are concerned, and, you know, I find it very difficult to speak, you know, again, even in your case, you have it up, you have it down, you know, to me, that, that's more bothersome to me, if it's concerning our citizens and, and the public, maybe it's easier to be remote and be able to speak, then we don't have to do that, and we can...
Well, obviously, obviously, the citizens aren't coming out, they're concerned about it, you're looking, who seated out there today is just staff and one or two other people, so...
Well, I only comes, only complaint that I've had was, um, received an email from the, uh, our citizens stating why aren't we wearing our masks, we're city officials, we're the leaders of the city, we should be wearing our masks, that's the only, only really bad, um, complaint or issue that has come forth to me, um, that is, of, of course, again, it's the majority of this board how we want to conduct our meetings, and so...
Um, for petitions to citizens, um, do we have it set up how they would be able to, um, come in and make their request, I know that we tried it last time, but I, I didn't see that anyone actually did it, so are we set up this time to be able to offer that to them?
Um, we, we had it available the last time for the public to participate, um, obviously there's a little bit of complexities with regards to, um, those who wish to attend, making sure that they get connected, I, I'll follow up with the I.T. staff, but, I mean, there was, there was some, there was some, uh, uh, folks who joined, uh, some of the other meetings, they just, uh, did so, uh, by, I, I think they reached out to I.T. Department so that they could establish their, their email addresses, so that the invite could be sent to them, and then they could join the meeting, same thing with the media, anybody that wanted to attend, uh, that particular meeting at that time.
Is, is Scott still here?
Um, I, I'm not sure, I think he may be.
Well, that's all I had, man, again, finish the discussion, but that's all I had under the business.
I, I would just like to get some advice from our attorney, um, there's been so many executive orders, and, you know, some of them have conflicted themselves, um, there's mask gathering limits now is, is ten, my question is, is a, I think he said that governmental meetings are exempt, um, you know, how, how does that apply to churches versus restaurants? I meant now you're, you, you wear a mask, I believe they said, when you walk in a restaurant and you sit at your table, you're supposed to leave it on unless you're actively eating or drinking, um, I, I was just wondering if he could provide us some clarification on the governmental aspect, because, Mr. Stevens, you were there, I think we had a conversation today, and Scott said that, um, his interpretation of the executive order is the buildings and facilities that are under the control of the state follow those guidelines, but the local municipalities and counties, if you will, it's left up to them on how they manage that, is that what you understood?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think of, uh, and it, and it's really, actually, it's, uh, under the purview of the governor, it's facilities under the purview specifically of the governor, that are, it's required of them to wear masks, uh, and it was encouraged that the municipalities follow suit, and I think that's one of the, uh, reasons why I think Mayor Nancy Vaughn from Greensboro was there to kind of, to kind of say, hey, here's what Greensboro's doing, you know, uh, to, to join in or whatever, so, um, I, I think with that, with, with that regard, it, there's a little bit of ambiguity with regards to governmental entities making a decision on their own about how they're going to manage that. Um, the, the mask-wearing policy's pretty clear, uh, with executive order in my mind, with regards to retail establishments that are fifteen thousand or greater, that those, those retail establishments are, are required to put somebody up front, they're, they're supposed to maintain the capacity requirements, they're supposed to require people to wear masks whenever they come in, uh, there's other aspects of it, but essentially, I think the, the, for all intents and purposes, the, the, the order says, wear a mask, um, but with regards to governmental work and performing those kinds of things, I think it's kind of left to the interpretation of the government.
So are, are, are our firemen, when they're in the firehouse sleeping at night, are they wearing masks?
Uh, again, uh, tough question, um, uh, that's, that's where the decision of the, the governmental entity is kind of left at their discretion as to whether or not, I mean, it's kind of difficult when you've got two individuals who sleep and bunk in the same room as a fireman, and they're required to sleep with masks on, it's hard enough to, you know, I guess probably get comfortable enough to sleep whenever there's other people you don't know sleeping in the room with you, or that's not your family, but in the, you know, if, if you follow the intent of the law and the way that was written for the governor's...
At least the intent of the executive order.
Exe, yeah, or the executive order, sorry, um, that, that, that is, uh, hi, his, his meaning for his government, uh, reviewed, uh, locations and, and departments, that at that point, he, uh, that our staff would have to wear those masks during those, those instances, that would be, that'd be tough, you know, when we have twenty-four, seven guys, and at any shift, we've got, what, Bobby, fifteen, twenty guys at the, at the firehouse together?
Twenty.
Twenty guys at the firehouse together, and they're all not in the same family together, so obviously, if the way that someone could interpret parts of that executive order, if they're not in the same family, then they're required to wa, wearing a mask together. Now, we do require them to wear masks whenever they're in the truck driving down the road, uh, doing that, I know Bobby's already issued that order for them to do that, but in the firehouse, you know, uh, twenty-four, seven, you know, that they're in there, they're, it, it, that'd be kind of difficult to enforce, so we've got to think it...
I have, I have a question, well, not a question, um, I don't understand why we are not advocating as elected officials to encourage to wear the mask, it makes no sense to partner with people to get testing for the community, but then don't wear a mask and, you know, push the narrative that we need to slow the spread, it's like counterproductive, and if the governor has created an executive order, it's important for us to say, hey, you need to wear the mask, so I'm confused on why we're still promoting, you know, holiday events and things of that nature, because the numbers have not gone down in Craven County, and regardless of what, what we personally feel about the mask, we should be wearing the mask, and the city employees need to wear masks, like, everybody should be wearing a mask based on the executive order, so I don't understand why we're, we're, we're not all on the same page with this, um, mandate. Okay.
Okay. Alderman Harris, it's, uh, your new business staff.
Um, only thing is, make sure you wear your mask and stay safe, that's it, there.
Thank you. Alvin Ash.
Only thing I'd like to do is wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, I hope that you can at least get together with some family and, uh, without violating any orders, and, uh, enjoy your day, uh, other than that, I have nothing, sir.
Okay, um, I just want everybody to be safe, have a, have, happy Thanksgiving, and, um, Alvin Kinsey.
Well, I was pretty much the same, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and stay safe.
Alvin Ash.
Um, yes, I want to pick on, um, Alvin Odom here, I know you serve on the N.C.D.O.T. Board, and I just wanted to ask again, I know that a lot of your projects have been cut, and if, you know, is there any, any, any light in the future saying that when they're going to receive some more funding, monies, or something to gear towards these highways, um, and one particular is Highway Fifty-Five, it's, so if there's something that you could possibly take back to them, or is it something that we as a city can address to them? I just want y'all to, if in your spare time or something, just go out there and travel down that highway, and you will see what I'm talking about, and it's, it's, I'm getting so many calls from people, you know, not, it's a very heavily traveled highway, so please just go out there and take a ride down, and you'll see what I'm saying, I would appreciate it, Alvin Odom.
Sure, just, just to clarify, I'm on the MPO Board, not the DOT Board, there's a big difference there, the other one pays a whole lot more. Um, we, we had a meeting, um, as a matter of fact, last week, um, of the MPO Board, it was a joint meeting with the TCC and the TAC, um, the TCC is more of a staff, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, it's more of a staff-led board, um, and the TAC is more of an elected official board, um, we went through, um, a very long meeting, uh, with plans about, you know, twenty forty-five and what we're looking to do, um, spent a lot of time and energy on, on that, because it is, the MPO is what they consider a long-range planning board, um, and long-range in, in DOT world is, is extremely long-range, again, it's twenty forty-five, so we're looking twenty-five years out. Spent a lot of time and energy on, on that because it is, the MPO is what they consider a long-range planning board. Um, and long range in, in DOT world is, is extremely long range. Again, it's twenty forty-five, so we're looking twenty-five years out. Went through that process and then there's some updates at the end and we heard from a DOT official that basically, Jeff, again, you can chime in if you'd like, basically said they didn't have any money. Um, so we've got all these plans, we spent all this money, there's, there's grants, there's, you know, each municipality within the county puts forth money, we come up with these plans and then DOT says, we don't have any money. And we're asking for updates on certain projects. The, the, the way the process works now is we would have to take that pro- project, Jeff, again, if it's a resurfacing, is that considered a project or is that maintenance? That's maintenance, I would assume. So it would come out of a different fund, um, but even the maintenance fund for the DOT, um, is, is extremely low, as we've seen by our shoulders of our highway that finally got cut not too long ago. So, very disappointing meeting, to be quite honest with you. To sit there and talk about all the plans, you know, there's, some, some of the plans, just to give you an idea, would be to turn MLK into a super street. So from where the Tractor Supply Store is, all the way to the, uh, Simmons Street intersection, would be to drastically improve that highway to help with flow, add lanes, add pedestrian and bike lanes. All of that is, you know, essentially, if they don't have any money, you can come up with the greatest plan in the world, but nothing's gonna happen. And unfortunately, that's where DOT is, and I asked the gentleman there, um, you know, what, what steps had they taken? Um, in my world, when you don't have money, you have to make some changes, and I asked him what steps had DOT taken, and he said essentially none. Um, so they're continuing to operate, continuing with the same staff and payroll and, and everything else, but they just don't have money to, to do any projects or maintenance, so, very disappointing.
Yes, very much so. And the next, um, thing I had was, I guess I'll direct this to Mark and, and the board. Um, almost what, almost two weeks now, maybe. We had this storm, all of this rain that we received here in this city. And there were so many areas of the city that, uh, the water in our citizens' front yards and backyards made it impossible for them to enter and exit their homes. And I went out and I took some pictures because I had, I was just bombarded with phone calls. And I went out and I took pictures of the area, and I just wanna know, what can we as a board do? We need to implement some type of pump station, uh, generator or something over on the, I'm gonna say the Simmons Street, uh, North Hills Drive, Hazel Avenue, Trap, uh, Trappers, uh, Trail, Rennie's Creek area. It was awful. The water was awful. So if we can, what can we as a board, you know, come together and talk about and try to do to implement and put another pump station over on that side of, 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 of the city? I mean, this is something that I would like for us to discuss. We don't have to go into detail, uh, tonight, but this is something we can discuss at, uh, maybe our next meeting or sometime in January. It would be greatly appreciated. I know that we, we have our resiliency plan in place now. So we're getting, we did, we do have all the funding that we were requested to get our resiliency plan up and running?
We, we've got the funding, but it's not in place.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's in the process.
It's in the process, planning process.
It's nowhere close to being finalized or in place.
Yeah, not the plan itself, but I'm saying we received the money that we asked up front.
We're fully funded for the different, two different phases.
Okay. So I don't know, um, Mayor, I know you have a lot of experience with this for as, and, and, um, probably Matt. What are we looking at for a pump in that area for its dollar wise?
I like to call it a fourteen-foot rule. I mean, I think the ten to twelve feet has been proven that in Florence, you can get with wave velocity, some flooding. But there's nowhere in New Bern's flood at fourteen feet and there are areas that will. Part of that, uh, I think that we all should be patient until the thirty-two million dollar drainage kicks in. But I noticed and observed at North Hills after, I think we talked, uh, I went by, a couple of residents called me in and, it's amazing, I actually rode down to the two pumps. It's, it's amazing to me that it, it was not carrying that area for whatever reason. If the, I don't know if they have variable speed impellers on them or, it, it looked like the, the gr- the, the grill, the grate was working, the water was going in. But essentially, for the six to eight inches of water we got, it just absolutely was not pumping enough. Even though that's forty-two thousand gallons a minute, it wasn't pumping enough. Now, I know that we had talked a little bit about, uh, Mark, some auxiliary electric pumps to step in in, um, rain events like we had a couple of weeks ago, that all this thirteen million dollars really don't have anything to do with, with the Simmons Street pumping system. And, but not number one, we could look into some auxiliary, um, pumping. Because it was not, I mean, the North Hills Road, you, you asked me to go look, it, it, it actually was, uh, very disappointing, the amount of water in that canal, it was not getting over to the wetlands area. So, um, the other thing is, is, as I've talked to the board and the public at large many times, that, um, we continue to approve, uh, engineer designs for developments and things for twenty twenty. We, not in my fifteen years on board, have we approved a development for the year twenty seventy, you know? And as the impermeable surfaces continued, uh, our, our, our infrastructures are not adequate for the amount of flow. So the city, this board moment could take actions, um, of oversizing culverts and things for future, future needs, instead of having to rip roads out and fiber optic lines, water and sewer lines, et cetera, and, uh, put new culverts in. So those are some strategic decisions for future planning, where, where we wanna continue to approve things for twenty twenty, or if we wanna plan for the year twenty fifty or twenty seventy for, uh, the needs of those future generations. So, uh, I think we should be patient like much on the thirty-two million dollar payment stuff. And then, um, Mark, what's your thought on the, on the, uh, some extra electric pumps when that, that, those two are not handling? Danny, you ran on that, so Danny Meadows, you wanna come up and talk about it?
We, we. Mayor, I think, uh, it's, it's just, you know, uh, without doing a full-blown major design analysis by some engineering company with hydraulic analysis and, and planning for whatever the board wants to choose. If you want twenty fifty and what you think the plan is gonna be as far as our growth patterns, uh, you're gonna look at entire basins of reshaping ditches, uh, redoing culverts, large-scale, major, major capital improvement projects, multi-million dollars. Uh, as far as the pumps go, uh, quite frankly, uh, uh, an eight-inch rainstorm in twenty-four hours or less uh, in eastern North Carolina where you've got flat land and no, no, uh, slope to discharge water at a, in a, in a high, higher velocity, uh, you're gonna have flooding. I'm sorry, it's just, that's, that's New Bern, that's what's gonna happen. North Hills Drive, the end of North Hills Drive down there at the end is elevation three, I believe, relative to the river. So if that river, uh, which at that time, when that storm event happened, we had a passing storm, hurricane storm that came that brought in some of the north, northeast winds as it was passing through, along with eight inches of rain, you're gonna have events where it's flooding and, and unless you wanna spend mega, mega millions, uh, to do something about it and formulate some kind of storage capacity places, then we can do that. But as you know, and I can't remember, Danny, what it cost to build that wetlands project and purchase all the land and put in the pumps and everything else, it was a multi-million dollar, how much? Four million, just for that wetland project there. Um, to, 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 to design for a six to eight-inch rain event, uh, for eastern North Carolina, uh, you're gonna have to have a very large piece of land to put a large amount of water and a whole lot of pumps. But that's just my two cents and I, without, without doing any, uh, engineering analysis and, and, and running through hydraulic analysis and everything else.
Barbara, how long did the water actually stay there? I mean, did it, did it stay there overnight and then move on? Or was it there for extended periods of time?
I just know when I went out to attend Commissioner Sampson's funeral, and that was around about, I think it was around about five-thirty, whatever. And it was, the water was up, the people couldn't even get into their front doors. I mean, the water was high over there. And, and, and mind you, I, Matt contacted me and he told me the pa- the pumps was working and the pumps was working all day, the pumps was doing what they was designed to do, but it just wasn't pumping the water out from Hazel Avenue back to Simmons Street in North Hills. It was a river over there. So, so that's the main concern I'm have over on that end. Because I do know now, once we get the Biddle Streets, um, project up and running, that's gonna eliminate a lot of water on that side of Duffy Field and National Avenue Riverside. But I'm looking at from Hazel Avenue back to Simmons over to, um, Trappers Trail and all that area. We have a problem over there and I just think that we need to come up with some way to try to address this problem somewhat for our citizens. And like you said, Mayor, we cannot take that thirty-two million dollars and, and, and come in and come up with a pump system. Is that what you're telling me? Because that's gener- that money is allocated for other, for other projects.
Mark hit it at about seven feet as the wind water will, at, at the lowest point on our railroad demarcation where, where with a tidal flood, it will come in. Like, in other words, all that water the other day was totally rain event water, it was not flood tidal. No, it, it's seven feet about where it'll come over.
Not, not necessarily, Mayor.
Cause you're not talking about all alone there, you know, having a, a higher elevation along that railroad or something and then, run over your stormwater, different ways where it had check valves or something to keep that water from back flowing back in?
Well, the, the railroad, and, and this is getting into a very complex, uh, discussion, if y'all wanna get in. We can, we're, we're happy to read, bring all this to y'all at a work session or something like this. But the entire road bed or train bed, if you wanna call it that, of the, of the, the, the railroad tracks, sits around an elevation ten, nine-ish, tenish, okay? But you have open channel flow, i.e. open ditches, open canals, open, open orifices that go underneath that, that it's just like a garden hose. If the elevation of the Neuse River is driven by wind and it's at elevation four, which typically happens in these northeastern events, very much so. If you see water at the back of Tron Palace or you see it at, uh, Council Bluff Greens right there going into the historic dis- district and it's sloshing up next to the road, then you can figure that that, that elevation of the river is probably at a good elevation three point seven five to four. That's ru- just rough numbers, okay? When that is at elevation three and a half to four, you're getting water at the end of North Hills Drive. There's nothing we can do about that. That's riverine inland-driven wa- uh, wind-driven rain. It's blowing the water into the Neuse, it's stacking the Neuse River up, and we can sit there and put as many pumps as you want. It's just, but, but God's in control at that point and he's gonna keep on pumping that water in. That's it. Now, the same thing happens down where we have the Rose Street Pump Station. You've got a big underneath drain that goes to the Jack Smith Creek and that's at elevation one, probably, where that water level's at. So anytime the water rises up to a four, to a seven, it's coming into the Duffy Field area. There's nothing we can do about that. It's, and that's, but we have those pumps specifically down there in case of, if your el- if your river elevation stays at an elevation one and you get fifteen inches of rain, that's coming into the Duffy Field area, which is a thousand-acre basin, it's, it's probably gonna be able to pump out that water. The problem is, is you've got seven inches of rain with a storm that's passing, that's got a northeast wind that's pumping that water and stacking it up in the Pamlico Sound where it can't get out. And it's rained from Raleigh all the way through to Kinston and Goldsboro and everywhere else and all that water's dumping down into the Neuse River. So all that's stacking up and then you've got seven or eight inches of rain in New Bern and that's, you've got, you've got inundated yards that are, that are soaked, and then you've got eight inches of rain on top of that. It's gonna cause things to be sloshy and wet and up in people's yards, guaranteed. Nothing you can do about it.
So I'm not gonna elaborate too much lot more on this, but, but I'm not even going to elaborate anymore. So I just think that we maybe need to talk at another meeting, we need to discuss this more in detail. Because if I was a resident living over there, and we already know that the North Hills Drive and a lot of people through Hurricane Florence, they're still waiting to get, uh, through the, through the hazard mitigation grant point, program. They're still waiting to get maybe their house elevated or to a buyout. And to my knowledge, we only have three in, three, um, applicants that was approved, am I correct, Jeff? And this has been over two, two years. So, you know, I think we, we need to do something. So if we can put, pick this up at a later date, I would appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Ms. Barbara, just a question, um, I know, I know you're ready to be done with it, but I'm curious, did, did you experience, or those residents experience more problems with this particular event than they have with previous ones since the hurricane? The reason I ask that is because I had some issues myself in my war and we went and looked and found there was a pinch point where the drainage was not open and it was causing it to back up. So I'm just curious if it's something from a maintenance standpoint that.
Well, if this was a case of drainage blockage, then there was, there are some major drainage buckets over in that area. Because this, I mean, this was a, I'm, you can't even see the canal. The canal is totally covered, it's running over into people's yards and into the street. You can't even see where the canal starts. So, to me, it's, it's, it's an issue. It's a real big issue. And, um, I think we need direct our to, attention towards it as a board for our cons- for our citizens of this city.
Mark, when you have in a rain event like that, uh, is Matt or somebody that point of, uh, information sources to, in other words, like, I went down to those pumps, they were both running. I assumed from going down there and they were running, that if I were doing that and the water was high enough that it was a tidal, um, there was tidal flooding coming in, I would turn pumps off. But the pumps were not off, so I assumed that the Neuse River level was sufficiently low that this was, this was rain, these six to eight inches of rain. Because wouldn't been any of these pumps been on if, if, uh, the Neuse River was high. So, so does anybody know what height the river was? Were we receiving floodwaters from the river at the same time with the, with the rain event?
Mayor, I'm certain, I, I don't have that number. I'm s- I'm certainly sure that we can pull the river gauge data as the Trent River, uh, it's, it's, it's done by NOAA. Uh, I can tell you with regards to the, the, uh, pumps at the Ja- that Jack Smith Creek Wetland Project, they're set on, on, on floats. When those floats indicate that the water level, it turns upside down and that water level's gotten to a certain point, it automatically turns them on. And quite frankly, I would prefer that the, the pumps be on and attempting to do something and the public see that versus, versus not having them on and being perceived as we're not doing anything. So, um, that, but I can tell you that the majority of it is driven by, when the floats turn up, they turn on. When the second one turns up, they run in dual, uh, capacity and they're pumping at forty-two thousand gallons a minute and the water coming out of the end of that pipe is pretty significant. And if it just can't keep up with it, then it can't keep up with it. And I, I'm happy to contact, um, uh, North Carolina State University, they've got all the data, Jordan, he's, he's seen it before. All the data that's associated with how they designed it and what it can handle and, and what kind of storm event it could potentially handle. We've got most of that data, I'm sure we can pull it out, uh, but there's, there's certain cases in flooding events and storms and hurricanes that it's not gonna be able to keep up.
So what wasn't the pump system put in on the other side of, where this pump system on, um, Simmons Street? So why wasn't the pump system put on the other side?
The pump is on the other side. There's two pumps. There's one at Rose Street. That one takes the water from all of this thousand-acre basin that flows down, uh, from the Duffy Field area and the Duffy Field Canal, takes that water, pumps it over to the other side of the, of, of the railroad tracks and then that water runs to the, the dual pumps that discharge it into the wetland area.
Okay. So that's the pump I'm speaking of, the one over, I think it's on Simmons Street, back there in that little wetlands area. So there, that, that pump is there. So that's the second pump. So why wasn't another pump put on the other side over by, um?
North Hills?
North Hills, Trappers Trail.
Because there's a, there's a pipe that comes underneath that whole, there, there, there's two, that, that water flows down and around and comes through a crossing that's underneath behind, a little bit behind, uh, the, the, uh, pumps. It goes underneath the railroad tracks. So it's separate of the Duffy Field Canal Crossing that comes underneath the railroad track. There's multiple places where it comes across over there, and that's why I'm telling you. There's multiple open channel flowing locations that when the water's elevated on that side of the, of, of the railroad tracks, it's gonna equalize and elevate the water on the other side of the railroad tracks. Until you have a closed system, that's what's gonna happen, period. That's, that's physics.
And, and Mark, I understand exactly what you're saying, but see, that was the reason why, I think it was the end of last year, when, uh, a developer here was trying to get that area off of Simmons. get that area off of Simmons Street rezoned so they could put multifamily apartments there. Now, to me, that would've created a, even a more issue of water. So, I, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda baffled here, why isn't something being done on that side of town to eliminate some of this water? And, and like I said, let's continue this, 'cause I wanna continue, 'cause I think it's a great concern for our citizens. So, if we can continue this at a later date, we'd be greatly appreciated.
All right, um, Mark, I, I heard that the recent request we had from Craven County Schools about a SRO officer for Creekside, that never made it back to us. Um, I believe that the school board made a decision to work with the county on that one, is that correct?
Um, I, I have not heard anything further from them. Captain, have you heard anything further regards to that? I don't, I don't, basically, the, the school resource officer, uh, a contract was, was, uh, sent to us, um, and, uh, we, I, I spoke with Megan and, uh, they were gonna, I think, possibly go a different route.
Okay, so, I just wanna be clear, because we've had a lot of discussion around this and what I don't want to happen is there be a lack of communication. It was my understanding that the Craven County Board of Commissioners did not even know that the school board had requested from the city of New Bern that SRO for Creekside. So, we've got, we've got three boards, we've got three entities that's working on this particular topic. And what I wanna make sure is, Alderman Harris, Alderman Astor and myself, when we had a meeting downstairs with the school board, we said, "You all need to get prepared." Correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Harris, that the end of the school year, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, the city of New Bern is gonna be expecting some increased funding to help offset those costs or either you need to be prepared to go to the county and let them handle the SRO program. Is that correct? Okay, what, I, I just wanna make sure, because before we know it, we're gonna blink. Thank you, Alderman Harris. Before you know it, we're gonna blink and it's gonna be June thirtieth. And what I don't want is us being sat up here with somebody out there saying, "Please fund this," when we've had ample time to make sure. So, I don't know what sort of communication from a formal standpoint that the board needs to take, but I feel like we need to take a formal stance on this and make sure that message gets to both of those parties, so we're all on the same page. Does that make sense?
It, it does, and, and I will tell you in my conversation with, uh, Megan Doyle, the superintendent, um, one of her questions was, "Has the chan, has the plan changed?" And, and, because they're, they were moving forward with the operation or consideration of the SROs of the city, uh, would be eliminated moving forward in, at June thirtieth. So, I think she still had that in mind, um, and, uh, that, that's the way it was kinda moving forward. And, and I indicated to her, it's kinda difficult for us to be talking out of one side of our mouth and saying, "We're gonna approve this SRO contract, um, with, with, uh, the, the Craven County Board of Education," but then on the other side saying, "We're eliminating the SROs and, or, we're, we're doing away with SROs and letting the county take it over." So, uh, it's, or wanting more money, whichever one it is, when you're approving a contract for this amount, but then you're wanting more money for this amount. So, it's kinda difficult, you're talking out of both sides of your mouth with that. So, I remember the conversation that we had, uh, as a group as well, and that was kinda where it, it, it landed was, is unless the funding is adjusted, plan on taking over the SROs come June thirty, and I think that's the direction that they've been moving forward. The other comment that, that I, I got from Megan during that conversation was that, um, she, I, I don't think exactly knew that that was coming to our, our group to be approved either and that, uh, she said, "Had she known that it was coming to our police for approval, that she probably wouldn't have ever made it there." So, I don't, I, I'm trying to figure out myself and, and so, we were, we were working at the request of, of, I think, um, uh, the, the police department was working at the request of what they received through the contract, who at the county that was, I, I don't know.
Well, I just wanted, I wanted to bring it up, because I wanted to, I want us to be good partners, I want us to be good neighbors, and I believe that there is, uh, uh, there is some benefit and, you know, if there was some negotiation back and forth, I know we're s, we're supposedly splitting the cost with the county fifty-fifty on the fiber. If they, you know, wanted to split the SROs fifty-fifty on that, that delta of what the difference is, you know, that's a conversation we can have, but the board, to my knowledge, never took a formal stance on it. It was just the three of us that were on that discussion. I just wanna make sure that, again, the, the board as a whole makes a decision on that or gives direction as a whole and it's not just the three of us who came to that conclusion. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
With the Alderman Bingo bringing it to our conversation point about our mask, we, we didn't come to consensus right now. Is it something we're gonna evaluate and come back to or how are we gonna handle that?
Talking about the Zoom meeting?
Yes, and we're, and the masks.
Again, you know, I'm just putting it out there, I think we need to be aware and we don't know what may come down the street. And I guess, uh, at any time, we can agree to do that or not do that. We've done that in the past. Just wanted to bring it to the attention, I think, um, that we need to have all the tools necessary depending on what the situation is. I wanted to have that discussion since the, uh, new mandate will be in, in effect, I'm not sure. You know, everything changes, that's the trouble, you know? Minutes ago, CDC saying now, "You don't have to quarantine as long." So, you know, that's changing. A vaccine is at our doorstep, that will change things. So, um, I think we just take a day-by-day approach, but I did wanna have some discussion regarding it. And I think the email did spur on that discussion as well, but I believe in, in freedom of choice and, um, I don't think it, it displays leadership or not leadership, but it just, I, I want our citizens to be safe. I'm supporting our staff to do everything possible. And I don't know people's personal situations, medical, emotional or otherwise, and I think, you know, I don't wanna bull, I don't wanna be bullied and I don't wanna, I don't want to bully anybody. That's the way.
Well, you know what, Alderman Bingo, I beg to differ with you, because we as a city, if we post down on our doors that a mask is required, then like you said, I know it's, uh, individual's choice, but I think we need to set some example. So, we either do or we don't. You know, we gonna post on our board, on our front doors down, up down?
Yeah, we post, we post mandatory evacuation for our hurricanes. And some people did and some people don't, because they said that's their choice. They knew of the dangers, they knew what lie ahead, we tried to lay it all out for them, but again, at the end of the day, it was their choice.
And, and I agree with you. I agree with you. I agree to disagree, but.
We had posted mandatory evacuation.
But we are, we are city officials. We're the leaders of this city. So, then if we gonna exercise, uh, uh, an order or a posting or something, I think that we, then we need to judge and govern ourselves accordingly to it. But that's just my opinion, we all have opinions.
Yeah, that's fine, and we can, we can agree to disagree. And that's why I, I feel that we work together really well, because we, we can discuss this, we don't have to be mad at one another, we don't have to bully each other and point the finger, but yet we can, we can talk openly and honest about it and that's the way I wish everybody else would handle it. But I, again, I brought it forward for discussion, I think we should be prepared. And again, with Scott not being here, I guess, is it forty-eight hours, Madam Clerk?
It's tomorrow.
That we have to give notice for any change in our meeting process or anything like that? Forty-eight? So, you know, again, we've got a month till our next, well, no, less than a month, two weeks, sorry. Jeez, days go by, right?
Do we know what the other cities are doing? Are they switching back over to virtual meetings?
I don't know that.
I, I think it's so new that I, I haven't been able to follow up to see what other municipalities are doing at this time.
Any other new business to come for the board at this time? Do we need a closed session tonight?
I'm not aware of one, sir.
Any other business to come for the city of New Bern at this time, tonight?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All three of the motions say aye.
Aye.
All persons saying, "We are adjourned."